Call or all?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Seaman.
Present.
Councilmember Seaver.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
Councilmember Wright will not be here this evening. Does the council have any comments? Councilmember Clay.
Thank you. Somewhat remiss over the last couple of weeks because I promised my six-year-old that I would tell the city how much she enjoyed her lacrosse class that was taught up on the upper field by Melanie and I don't remember the name of the other staff member who was present, but they were well loved and the kids told me what a great time they had and it was the best thing that they had ever done. That's all I have to share.
Good. Anybody else? Councilmember Reynolds.
Well, the WSSC saga continues, but their work has begun, so people on the streets that in my order are very happy about that. Other things keep popping up like a leak on the lower part of Grand Avenue appeared over the weekend and so WSSC has been notified and we're hopeful that it'll be done by December 5th, at least in the three streets that I'm most concerned about. So, thank you for efforts in that regard.
And on that subject, I got an email today from WSSC. I don't know who else got it, but yeah, we all got it, inviting us to a session that they're going to have with municipalities and counties in December about the process for their repaving of streets and who to contact and what to know and it's like, well, gee, you needed this a couple of years ago, both for us and you. Other comments? Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like just to let the community know that I think my wife is great. She's here tonight with us and she spent a busy day today handing out food packages for the Dennis Community Services. This year, they've signed up over 700 families for assistance with turkey packages and fixings and today, I think, handed out about 130 packages and have a few more to go. I'd like to thank Dennis Community Services for the work that they do and helping those less fortunate in our community. I'd also like to let everyone know that Pat Lovelace, who is here at public comment session most weeks, was taken to the emergency room today at Washington Dennis Hospital with some recurring heart issues and so we'll say prayers for him and hope that he is with us again next week, or at least soon. Thank you.
Your first comments were along the lines of a dog bites man story. It'd be more interesting when you come back with a man bites dog story.
I'm not sure I follow you, but that's okay.
I'll leave it at that. Any other comments? Okay. There are many additional agenda items and the scheduling update is we're going to be on break until January 5th, so I'll be putting together the January agendas over the next couple of weeks and until then, we're not going to worry about the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. If there's anybody who'd like to make any comments, please identify yourselves and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, I'm Rosalind Briggsby. I'm Executive Director of the Old Tacoma Business Association. I come before you tonight to encourage you to support local Tacoma Parks businesses in your holiday shopping to look at what your own commercial area offers first before you pursue other places. Small businesses represent 99.7% of all employer firms in this country. They employ about half of all private sector employees, pay more than 45% of the total U.S. payroll, generate between 60 and 80% of new jobs annually in the last decade, and create more than half of all non-farm private gross domestic products in this country. Our own small businesses, the independent shops in Tacoma Park, provide a thriving part of the identity of this city and I wanted to thank Virginia Myers, the City Newsletter Editor, for her article. My copy came in today's mail and she specifically said, we're buying, she's talking about why it's important to spend money locally in Tacoma Park businesses and she says, "We're buying a culture of community. We're preserving the little strip of shops that we love so much and in many cases, we're supporting the artists, musicians, their trade wages and lifestyles we favor." And I want to give a shout out to her because I think that really clearly articulates the importance of supporting our own local Tacoma Park businesses. And I would like to challenge council members to consider doing all your holiday shopping, if you can, in Tacoma Park this year. Elizabeth has given you a copy of the diorama advertising that we're doing this year at the Tacoma Park. It should go up December 1st at Gallery Place Chinatown Metro Station platform and what we're trying to do is capture a feeling of what's the flavor and humor and culture of Tacoma Park. So, I appreciate your attention. Thank you.
And I just want to reiterate what Ross said. You also got the "Put your money where your house is" bumper sticker and all the shops will also have in their windows, "So, thank you for choosing your independent local business." These are items put out by AMIBA, which is the American Independent Business Association. Bookstores across the country, independent bookstores, use this organization to great effect and so we're hoping to use them as well. I also want to give a shout out to Eric Baum, the editor of the Tacoma and Silver Spring Voice. He has taken up the pledge to just shop locally this holiday season and will be blogging about it and if you all take up that challenge as well and would like to blog about it, that would be great. Thanks.
Oh, yes. And one more thing. This year's holiday open house weekend is Saturday and Sunday, December 6th and 7th and the annual pajama party, which was started many, many years ago with Maryland and SNABs, is Sunday, September 14th. And for those of you who aren't familiar with it, most of the local stores in the year open up at 7:00 in the morning and from 7:00 to 10:00 in the morning offer various incentive discounts if and only if you are in fact wearing your pajamas or nightgown. Sweats do not count. And it's a lot of fun. Lots of people come out. I remember last year at Maryland, we literally had people lined up outside the door at 6:00 in the morning and it was a very, very cold December morning. And in another year past, we had somebody who had a friend make her flight arrangements to visit this area based on the base of the pajama party. So, if senior neighbors doesn't encourage you to come out that early, we also have Krispy Kreme donuts too. Thanks.
Thanks for both of your comments and I'm glad to see that you're talking about shopping locally rather than shop local. And so far, I have done all my Christmas shopping locally since I bought calendars.
Last year, we had a shop local or shop locally week, the first week in December. Isn't that right? I believe we passed an ordinance to that effect and is that an ongoing week or was it just last year? And if it was, if it's not officially ongoing, ought we not have a first week in December as a shop locally week?
Yes, we should.
How do we go about that?
Last year, you passed a resolution discussing how to date for your house for that and late for the season.
Oops.
I would imagine you passed a resolution to designate generally the first week of December.
Yes, we will do that, but it'll have to be for next year.
Mayor, an alternative might be for you to do a mayoral proclamation that you could do without the council being in session.
And I can do that tonight?
We can have it ready for you upon your return in December.
Okay.
There we go.
I'll do that. So, the first week will be shop locally week. Is there anybody who'd like to comment?
This would be a real good time for any people who have an opinion about the recreation department and things they'd like to see here to come forward and talk about it.
Especially people who are poking other people with elbows. You can all come together. Oh, come on up and give him support. Come on up.
Um, we want to talk about, we want to have-
Can you first give us your name?
Oh, I'm Hindawa. This is Longy and this is Rashad.
Welcome.
We would like to start off a youth basketball team for the Tacoma Park recreational department and we want to have a younger team for ninth and 10th graders in high school and then another team for like on up and like just like people who have just graduated and like high schoolers. And then like we want to play against like other recs, just something to like strengthen the spirit of like our community and stuff like that. So, we want to just have like yes league going on and like this summer, we can have like other things going on during the year. So, kids can get more involved.
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
And I think in addition to wanting to have a basketball league for the high school age and those who have just graduated, they were hoping that basketball league could, they could have a team that could go to other communities and represent Tacoma Park and like I said, the spirit of our community carried across the county. But I understand that you also had a petition with some other items on it that you were asking for. What kind of other things did you have on your petition?
I didn't have the petition. Go ahead and talk. We had like lights in the back of Piney Branch, so like instead of like paying to go in a different gym, we could just play basketball on the back or like some kind of homework club, like tutoring for like little kids who don't know how to do like subjects, like subjects that family and we had, um-
I think some of that tutoring was for little kids, but I understand that some of the tutoring was also for some of you who signed the petition that were looking for help with reading and mathematics and science and other studies that you have. And the idea that was talked about with the group of young men and women was that the homework club would be a room where they could work together on their homework but have some adult supervision that could give them assistance with the different subjects if they had problems that their friends couldn't help them with. Rashad, I know that you had the petition and you had it signed by a number of people. Do you know how many people did sign it and do you have a copy of that petition you could give to the city clerk?
I had given it to Riley because I was hoping he was going to come.
Okay, so your brother has it. Do you know how many people ended up signing the petition?
At least like 50. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for having the courage to come forward tonight and tell us about it.
Also, I'll just say that if you get 50 people to sign a petition, that's a meaningful petition and that is meaningful for us up here because we feel that you've done work to gather those signatures. So, good job on that.
Okay, thank you.
And it sounds like Councilmember Siemens has been working with you and I would encourage him and you to keep working on these things and see if you can get some of those things off the ground pretty quickly. Because that sounds like some good ideas. And you're going to work on those?
Actually, it's been an interesting exercise. We, they came forward originally to me asking how they could get some of these things and so we spent some time talking about how you go about getting things within the city government and how you get the city government, local government, to implement the changes that you like to see. We spent one whole evening talking about what is the city council, who are the people in the city council and how do they make their decisions and how do they find out what the community really wants. So, it's been an interesting process and I'm proud of these young men for coming forward tonight and taking the next step towards getting the things that they want.
Good. And feel free to come back anytime and tell us more. And if some of these things get going and it's working well or it's not working well, come back and tell us about it. Be good to hear. Is there anybody else who'd like to make any comments?
Very briefly, it's Rob Ritchie with Jackson Avenue in Boyd and I'd say a lot of the council members also run fair votes and I've worked with a lot of you on the issue of instant runoff voting among other electoral reforms and I just was just praising Councilmember Seaver's resolution that's going to be before you tonight about urging the state of Maryland to make sure that Tacoma Park has an option to use instant runoff voting on, the new state voting equipment and other jurisdictions do. And just one thing, since Tacoma Park had that overwhelming 84% win for it in 85, it's been in 95, it's, oh, 2005, we're moving up in decades. It's also passed now in Oakland and Pierce County, Washington, which just used it in November, in this month in a county of 800,000 people. So, it's a big place that's starting to use it. And Memphis, Tennessee, the second biggest city in the southeastern United States, just passed it with 71%, but Tacoma Park is still number one at 84%.
Thanks. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment? Okay, then the next item on the agenda is the city manager's comments.
I don't have anything in particular to report tonight, but I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has.
Hi. Yes.
Yes, Barb, I understand the registrations for the basketball leagues are rather healthy. Could you tell us about how it's going?
I checked with the rec staff earlier. I don't have exact numbers, Councilmember Barry, but I should be able to send the council an update tomorrow. Some of the volunteers did do an onsite registration on Saturday. My understanding from the rec director, as of the last count and obviously lots of folks were still registering, I think, including the Long Branch League, I think we had almost 200 kids signed up so far. But I'll get the council an exact number for the winter basketball league and get that out to you tomorrow.
That's great. I'd like to congratulate the rec committee and the city recreation staff for a job well done.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
I have a kid signed up in that too.
And the latest numbers I heard were 48 signed up on Saturday and that took it over 200, but I don't know by how much.
Yeah, I wasn't sure by how much over 200.
I always thought it was 250. I just asked.
Okay.
Good. And it sounds like there's some requests to take the age groups above the top, so that's a good sign. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll move to the first item on the main agenda, which is the auditor's presentation and the auditors are here and if you'd like to, probably the easiest thing is come up to the table. And if you want to introduce yourselves or Yovonda can introduce you and tell us what we need to know.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to present the reports to you this evening. My name is Greg Trustling. I'm one of the audit partners on the engagement. I'm also a co-partner, I guess, with Keith Novak. Keith Novak didn't be here tonight, so he asked me to fill that. To my right is Eris Coleman. Eris was the engagement manager. She's been involved with the engagement for several years. I think you all know Yovanda Brooks. She is here also just to support us if there's any questions that may be. Okay, so I just want to point out a couple of things to you this evening. I did want to point out that within the conference of annual financial report, management actually prepares this report. And then the whole packet, it's the only information that we give them that's actually included in here, page 10 and page 11, which are the actual auditor's report. We do actually put a bunch of time into the audit, testing procedures, things like that. So, I think sometimes people have to judge that, you know, we spend all the time, we give you two pages, but really we give support and in addition, we do spend a lot of time on all the procedures to express our opinion. I did want to point out that the third paragraph will tell you that this is an unqualified opinion, which means it's a clean opinion. It's the highest opinion that you can get. It's the opinion that everybody wants. Second paragraph points out that our audit was conducted in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America and also government auditing standards. The first paragraph kind of talks about the scope of the audit and it goes into, it discusses what are called opinion units. When you look at the financial statements, how they're broken up, there are government-wide financial statements and there are fund financial statements. So, this makes reference to the different pieces. There's also some information on some budgetary schedules. Going through the opinion, the fourth paragraph points out that we also did issue a separate report in accordance with government auditing standards that discusses compliance testing with laws, regulations, other matters. And that's a separate report and Eris will talk a little bit about that. One additional report to that is the management letter that you'll see included. You received those this evening. The difference between the government auditing standards report and the management letter report are the other matters report. Government auditing standards communicates a certain higher level internal control weaknesses to management and the other matters report communicates lesser matters, usually generally best practices or smaller observations that we've had that we don't feel are significant to be considered significant deficiency. I know the past couple of years, you probably had some discussions about the difference between significant deficiency and a management letter comment. The standards changed about a year ago, so this year is our, I think our second year rolling this out to you. So, that's all I had on the actual auditor's report. There are certain required communications. You may remember when we were here earlier in the year, Keith Novak had some discussions about a new auditing standards, statement of auditing standards number 114. And what that is, is certain communications we have to make to those charged with governance. And basically, you received a letter way back that kind of explained what was involved with that. And basically, I'll just give you a follow-up on what we told you before about what's involved with SAS 114. Essentially, we are required to communicate those charges with governance, certain responsibilities, so auditor's responsibility and management's responsibilities involved in the audit. Management is responsible for the financial statements and their content, the correctness of the financial statement. Our responsibility is to express an opinion based on our audit on the fairness of the financial statements in all material respects. And going back to the unqualified opinion, this means we found everything to be okay from that perspective. There's a couple of points that are related to opinion shopping, which don't affect the city, so we really don't have to cover those because we didn't have any issues with those. We're required to discuss any new or significant accounting standards or policies, procedures that were implemented this year and the city had none of those this year. Accounting estimates were required to talk about. Really, the biggest estimate probably for the city is the usefulized of the depreciation of depreciable assets. We found those were consistent with what we've seen in prior years. Another significant accounting estimate is the actuarial assumptions that are used in calculating the police pension liability. We do rely on outside specialists to help with some of that and we do perform certain procedures on their work to make sure that it seems to be complete and accurate. There were no difficulties in performing the audit. I wanted to thank Ms. Brooks and the city manager Matthews for all their help during the audit. They were very helpful and we think it's a smooth process. We have a good working relationship with them. I think Eris can speak a little more to that too. She just heard. One more, a couple more things we're supposed to report to you. Representations with, from management. Management did represent certain things, though, during the audit. Unfortunately, a copy of that information got left out of your packet. It's basically, it's what's called a client or management representation letter. We were going to provide you a copy of that. After the meeting, we'll get that down to you early, I guess later this week, we'll get it down to you, but we can send you a PDF of that file. So, it's essentially, it's a very standard letter and it just points out certain things again that management has signed and represented, those are the things they told us during the audit. They're representing us to it in writing in one last step as part of the financial statement audit. And that's really all I had to communicate related to the actual financial statement themselves and my responsibilities to those charged with governance. Eris will discuss the management letter and the gas letter a little more in detail.
Here.
Good evening. Before you, you were given tonight two letters. One is going to state independent audits report on internal controls over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. I'm going to discuss this letter first because this letter is required under Yellow Book standards to be communicated to those charged with governance as well as management. What this letter basically entails that during the audit, we look at internal controls over the financial reporting process and that we want to make sure that if, the whole theory that if you have adequate internal controls, then more than likely, you have accurate information that's being reported in your accounting records, which will be comprised in your financial statements. So, we take a look and Yellow Book requires us to take a look and test your internal controls. And during that process, if we note certain areas, we have two reporting requirements where we note, we note certain items that are, we call them significant deficiencies. And what this means is that if this particular incident continues, it is severe enough that more than likely, it could have a material effect on your financial statements. Then, if you have a series of these particular incidents, that can become a material weakness. Therefore, we're saying that you have so many concerns with the internal controls that you can have a more, a material, it's more than likely you'll have a material impact on your financial statements. So, this is what this report, for the most part, entails and this is what is communicating to those who read your, for those who read the statements and for any other reporting agencies such as federal agencies pass through some of the grant tours and things like that. A lot of times, they will ask for your, they call it Yellow Book, but it's the, or the gas letter. This letter, as you know, for this year, we have no comments at all. And saying that, that means the internal control review that we did over the financial statement areas, there were nothing that came to our attention that were significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. Last year, the council committee had two items that were reported on this report and And last year, and looking at the police department evidence room, we had a segregation of duties. We had a situation where one particular individual had total access over receiving the asset, securing the asset, recording the asset, and then the other, along with that, the other one was safeguarding the asset. The both of those items were tested and looked at again this year, and because there was a new position added and a person was hired, that, those two areas of concern were remedied. And we're glad to say that when we went back to do testing, the segregation of duties, we have individuals who, we have a person who receives the asset, and a different person who's responsible for safeguarding the asset. The second letter I'd like to talk about is called our management letter, and it just has the, the address to the, to the mayor and the city council members. This letter, for the most part, these are issues that we noted while we were doing the audit, and they were not severe enough at this time to be considered a significant deficiency. So they did not warrant communication on the gas letter, which is required by Yellow Book. But these are items that we're saying that we'd like to draw attention to, because they could become significant deficiencies. There are some areas that, right now, are very immaterial to their financial statements. However, you could have, if they become, if they're not probably looked into or not kept in the back of someone's mind, you could have potential concern down the road. So I'd like to discuss this letter. We do have three comments listed on, on the, on the letter this year. One relates to grant expenditures. The city does not receive a lot of monies for grants. However, they, especially in this economic climate, when you look at federal requirements, especially HUD is a very strict grantor, and other state and local requirements of those who give you funds, they have certain reporting requirements or monitoring expenditures. Monies are required to be spent in accordance with certain rules, regulations, and so forth. Sometimes you have a matching requirement. While looking at this process, we noted that the city does have a process for, for monitoring expenditures, for monitoring how the grant is maintained. However, this process is not formalized. It's in someone's head. And I guess what you would call the R G S P, it's nice to have something formalized, because if someone wants to leave the city, then you're stuck with not having that, that control in place, and then you're starting from scratch again. And I do remember, it's been a while, a few years ago, where the city had a lot of grant monies, especially dealing with the community center, and monies were disallowed because of just that process. One person was controlling the whole process, and then when it's time to get monies back, they were not spent in accordance, accordance with the grant requirements. So that's something they would like to bring to, to management, that maybe a formalized process, that kind of living, breathing document, so it can carry on as the next person moves on. The next item was deferred revenue. And this relates to the park and recreation programs. As you know, persons, community persons could come in, and they are able to pay in advance for programs. Camps, summer camp, or different kind of camps are really the, the main items that they pay in advance for. Well, when we get to the year-end, means June 30th number, basically for, in government auditing standards, if money has not, if you have not given the services and someone's paid you for them, it's unearned. So therefore, it's considered as deferred revenue. Currently, the city is not recognizing the portion of the money that's unearned. A lot of that is the summer camps, and the summer camps can range anywhere. I think there's something six weeks, some of them are two weeks. So yeah, but it's a big disparaging, it's a big difference in how much money you're looking at. When we sat down and went through the actual numbers of what was probably unearned as of 6/30/2008, this amount right now is very immaterial to the financial statements as a whole. However, just tonight, we listened to the, the youth, and, and also with you, with your basketball sign-up, the city is trying to encourage more and more programs, and you're, so you have potential to have more revenue, more advanced revenue, unearned revenue, to where this could be a significant, a significant problem with the financial statements. We've spoken with management, and one of the things, in, in working with that, I know the parks and records are looking at a new system, and maybe in getting a new system, they can have this feature now, they can capture some of this information, which is really probably the concern of how to get it, because right now, as monies come in, you just count it, the system's unable to say, this program has not started, so therefore, we have $100 for a program that has not actually taken place. And the last item is a check signature stamp. There are three individuals within the city's management that are authorized to sign checks. Each one of these individuals are given a check stamp that they use to put their John Hancock on these checks to be dispersed. What we noted is that one of the individuals had their, in this point, it's not, it's for emergency situations, because they may be called away for, they go to different seminars and things of, of that nature, but their check stamp was accessible to another check signer during business hours. We did not see it as a significant deficiency, because none of the check signers have authorization to actually print out a check through the electronic system. They, for the most part, there are other persons who look into checks before they are sent out and match them up with documentation, system access. So you're looking at something that you would need collusion circumventing this system in order for, lots of look at significant deficiency. Right now, the city does not have the opportunity, we will say, the perfect opportunity for a, a significant event to occur. However, it's something we want to bring to the city's attention, because if one, other controls were to fail, and someone's access to the stamp, then it's like, if this, then that. So that's why we've done a management letter, that's a FYI, because this is something we noticed.
And it is important to note that in management's response and from our discussions, that once we brought the issue up, they immediately changed the procedure, and it's now kept separate work. The other individuals can't have access to it.
And just to brush here, just to follow up on the management letter comments, we had, there were two. There was one, the journal entry review and approval. And what that process was, was that one individual was approved, not approving, but actually was posting the journal entries to the, the general ledger, and that they were immaterial amounts, and they were not being reviewed by a supervisory person. That has been remedied, because a new position was added and filled to the finance department. So you have a staff accountant who's actually doing the journal entries, and then you have the director of finance who's actually reviewing these journal entries. And then the second one was the passport fees. As the council remembers, the $30 processing fee that is collected by the city to handle the transactions for, or the paperwork for the passport was basically being collected and remitted to the finance person by one, by one person. And where our concern was there, although immaterial to the financial statements, was that although this, I may get my passport, is, is someone maybe, is potential, someone have the opportunity to take money from the city, not so much the passport, because their money's going to be remitted to the state department. That wasn't a concern, it was just, well, $30 to the city. That has also been, been remedied by, all the monies now are paid directly to director of finance, not director of finance. They're paid to the department of finance. The individual is given a receipt stating what they paid, and then they take this down to the, the customer service person who processes the passport and paperwork. That's it for the two, Eris. Any questions?
It seems like it's a pretty clean audit, and the, I'm glad to see that the items that you did find are almost kind of precautionary in nature, and that's a nice position to be in and not have any of the other higher levels of cautions that we may have had in the past or are possible to have. Any of my colleagues have any questions?
Just a comment, and that is to say, I'm, I'm glad that it's a clean audit, not surprised, given the award-winning performance of our city's financial department. This is in keeping with that tradition, and I want to thank Yvonda in particular, and the city manager, and all of the staff for continuing in the award-winning tradition. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I had some questions that I gave to the city manager ahead of time. Did you say you had some written answers to those?
I'll address those questions.
If you want, if you want to address those, we can probably z through those pretty quickly.
Okay.
Do you want, do you want me to ask the questions and you give the answers, or do you want to give the questions and the answers?
Is that the use?
On pages 32 and 62, why are the general government expenditures so much less than budgeted? And I, and I saw on page 62, which has more detail, that it's in the category of other unclassified, and I had no idea what that was.
Okay. What other unclassified is, is what we budget as non-departmental expenditures, and the things included in that would be the building liability, building insurance and the liability insurance, training, tuition reimbursement for employees, the day laborer, the property tax rebates, equipment's comp, things like unappropriated reserve, general contingency, and the equipment reserve transfers. And some of those expenditures in that category were under-spended, and those were things like the unappropriated reserve, and actually, we don't spend the contribution to the equipment That's basically to provide the transfer. And the general contingency was, had an unextended amount, as well as employee training, employee recognition, and an account called leave liability, which is provided for people leaving the city and paying out of vacation. And the property tax rebate had a small unextended amount.
So most of this was an issue of timing?
It's, I guess it's an issue of being difficult to estimate, and then you have some things that are required in the budget process for which you don't actually have expenditures charged directly against that account. Like the unappropriated reserve, we don't charge expenditures directly to that account. We transfer it out and move it to another budget item. We had, you know, a little bit left in that account, about $65,000 left in that account.
Yeah, because the total, the total variance was almost $800,000.
Yeah. If I may, as the council may recall, we make an annual contribution to the equipment replacement reserve, and as Yvonda was just saying, it's essentially a transfer from the unrestricted, undesignedated fund balance to one that is designated. What we do as a matter of practice is we budget that contribution in the non-departmental, and we footnote it that it's really not a budgetary item, but we do it for disclosure and transparency purposes. But the net effect of that, as you'll see every year, a fairly large number in non-departmental, budgeted but not actually expended.
So in the interest of transparency, we have confusion?
Yeah, I guess it depends which one is less confusing.
That's actually supposed to be clarity.
Right. But of that, almost $793,000, $94,000, $500,000 is that contribution to the equipment replacement reserve. The next largest amount, as we've been talking about, there's the unappropriated reserve in the general contingency account. That only, we typically will go ahead and try to do our best guess at what will be expended from that during the year. But the good news is that there's money left over, but I think the numbers that Yvonda was mentioning, in addition to the $500,000, which is the contribution to the equipment replacement reserve, there was probably about another $140,000 that was left over in the, between the unappropriated reserve and the general contingency account. So we budget the amount that is required by the charter, unless the council basically, specifically gives direction that those monies are to be spent, then they essentially fall back to fund balance. So that's almost everything, except maybe $100,000 of the amount that's there.
$100,000 here, $100,000 there. Pretty soon, we're talking about real money.
It's all real money.
And backing up a page, on page 61, the charges for services, and the last one in that category was other, and that had the negative variance by $57,000, and what's other?
Okay. Basically, what that is, is service charges for things like the special trash pickup, mulch sales, recyclable sales, the bus shelter ads, capian, and the rental of the parking lot to the fire department. And the thing that's causing the big variance is we were estimating the amount of money that the Washington Suburban Sanitary Commission was going to give us for repair, or repaving roads that were destroyed through, you know...
That they destroyed. We're back to that issue.
Were damaged because of what they had to do.
Right.
And we had budgeted $130,000 as revenue, and we actually only received $42,000 of that. So that accounts for most of that variance.
Do we know if that's a timing issue or a...
It's timing.
Timing, okay.
And some of the, the other revenues in this category were more than what we had budgeted, so the net effect ended up being the $57,000.
And then, back to page 62, why the library aid was less? Because I thought that was a figure that was real easy to know, because it's, it's a small adjustment to a figure based on a formula?
Well, the formula is based on the county's library expenditures, as well as the city's assessable tax base. And what happened here, we're basically under the budget of $119,000 by $4,700. However, the revenues that we received fiscal year 2007 were $110,492, so we did have a slight increase of about $4,000 in that revenue category.
So it was, it was trying to pick a figure based on two different formulas, and we guessed a little high.
When we budget, we actually get this number from the county. We actually track through their budget process, and we'll actually pull the number from the county executives' recommended budget that comes out in mid-March. But it is obviously every, every revenue number, whether it's the county doing it or us, is sort of your best guess, and so we pick up their numbers, and then they go through a calculation as they go through the year.
Yeah. I only ask the question because I thought it was a fairly easily ascertained number, and it doesn't change much.
It doesn't change much. I think last year, we were a little surprised it actually had gone up, and so, but it's, they're usually pretty much on the ballpark.
Yeah, because I think it started out at about 87 or 88, and it's gone up from there.
Right.
And then the general question, starting with page 70, all of a sudden, all the numbers go backwards? You start with 2008 on the left side and go back, and I know the first page or two that I looked, I thought, you know, I thought I saw a trend, and then when I looked at the column headings, I went, wait a minute, it's going the other way. Is, is there a reason that we have to do that?
Well, the requirement is to present 10 years.
Right.
And it's, I think it's optional whether we show the most current year or the oldest year, but since the emphasis here is on the fiscal year 2008, we're basically showing the current year and then showing the trends in the past.
Well, I'll just, I'll toss my vote in for reversing the direction.
So are you requesting that we reverse them next year?
I'll, I'll just say that's my preference. You do with it what you want. Page 76, I was wondering why the public utilities assessed values are dropping, and wondering if it was because of, whether it's infrastructure that's depreciating.
Okay. The assessed value is based on the reports that are submitted by the public utilities, which include assets that are depreciable, and also the city's tax rate decreased from a dollar and...
From 66 to 67?
No, 1.575 to 1.525 per $100 of assessable.
Oh, right, because it's the higher one.
This is the personal property tax.
Right, right.
So it's about a 50 cent decrease per 100, which could have also impacted the decrease in the public utilities tax.
Say that on the, on the rate decrease again?
Okay. Whenever you change the real property tax rate, you're also changing the personal property tax rate, because you multiply it 2.5 times the real property.
And so if you drop the property tax rate by 5 cents, you're dropping the personal property tax on business by 12 cents?
We dropped it by 2 cents.
Right.
From fiscal '08 through to '0, from '07 into '08.
The effect of a tax change is magnified and is... The effect of a tax change is magnified in this particular area. And with a depreciating asset, they're both going in the wrong direction. Okay. Page eighty-two, whether we have mixed figures there and whether we have to?
Well, the problem with the demographic statistics that you're referring to on page eighty-two is that basically, you get information at the state level and at the county level that is not available for the city at our level. And what we basically did for this table was to take the statistics from the county and compute, like using their per capita income times the population just of the city to come up with the total personal income.
So, the income figure is extrapolated from the county-wide figure for our population? But the...
Well, we did, we used per capita and multiplied times our population to get total personal income just for...
Right, so we've got, we've got city figures for population, personal income, per capita income, but not for labor force and not for registered pupils?
Right, and on the unemployment road, the unemployment rate is basically the county's.
Right, so we've got some city figures and some county figures. It just kind of seems like a mixed table that doesn't tell me very much.
Well, it would be nice to be able to get to Tacoma Park's statistics, but it's just not available.
Yeah, it almost seems like it's, like it's really two tables mushed into one.
And this table is required, so...
Oh.
And we just basically use the footnote to explain.
Okay, so you have to read the footnote to see why the figures don't make any sense in a table that's required?
Your time's up.
I was just going to say, I had two items on here, but I'm not going to go there. Any other questions on the financial reasons? Thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
I think you did that all perfectly. Yeah, well, see, but I gave my question ahead of time, so they had the answers.
Pass this over to Doug Leaks.
Sure. See, I can't make it go off when I want to. We'll move on to the next item, which is the first item in our regular meeting agenda. It's a resolution recognizing the twenty-fifth anniversary of the adoption of our Nuclear Free Zone Act and declaring December seventh to thirteenth, two thousand and eight, as Nuclear Free Zone Week. Does anybody kind of... Councilmember Snipper is going to tell us about this. And would you like to introduce the resolution?
I would like to introduce the resolution, yes.
Somebody want a second?
A second.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Clay.
I don't think it needs a lot of comment. We've had this Nuclear Free Zone ordinance for twenty-five years.
But it deserves a lot of comment in the Washington Post all the time.
It does, it's true. I was on the first committee implementing this thing, and had a lot of interesting unintended consequences, one of which was, many years ago, was an opportunity to look at the procurement regulations and the procurement process in Tacoma Park. And as a result of that effort, we discovered some less-than-optimal management of procurement in some of the departments, and were able to set up a better procurement process. And I think that was an unintended benefit to the whole city. There have been other occasions when the search for an alternative product to be purchased resulted in a product that was better and/or cheaper, sometimes both. There have been a couple of waivers of the ordinance over the years. And so, that's shown that the waiver part of the process works as well. So, I am extremely pleased with this. I think it's a case in which we've been a leader around the country. Happy to introduce this resolution.
Are there any comments on the resolution? Councilman Robinson?
Wouldn't it be great if we had a toxin-free zone here instead of a toxic nuclear zone? Of course, that's a big task. But even if we can't have it be an official toxin-free zone, at least we can take heart and move towards that in some way. I support the resolution, and I like the gist of it and the reality of it.
And we can go a long way toward that with having a toxic-free atmosphere discussion. Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, I also support the resolution. And I wonder if there isn't more that this council can do to help to ensure that we do get the reposting of the Nuclear Free Zone signs that used to mark the city and had been all disappearing except for, I think, just one or two. Is there any action that we can take that would make sure that that happens?
I think I understand the council's intent, but I don't think there's anything formal that you need to do.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe we could just have a report back when they're up? Thanks. Any other comments? Are there any citizen comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is second reading ordinance amending our code, chapter four dot twenty-four, making technical amendments to the police employee's retirement plan. We had a discussion about this last week at first reading. Are there any...
Move the ordinance?
Seconded by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Barry. Any comments? Any citizen comments? This is second reading ordinance. We'll need a roll call, or a court please call a roll.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
Yeah, I just have that one. Next item on the agenda is a second reading ordinance authorizing payment and move taxes agreement with Montgomery House in partnership for seventy-six ten Maple Avenue. Again, we had discussions on this in first reading last week. Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Stevens, seconded by Councilmember Clay. Are there comments? City manager has a comment.
I think you're moving so fast that Sarah Daines hasn't made it down from her desk upstairs. I think she's probably coming right now. I did just want to call to the council's attention. It's noted on the cover sheet that there has been a change since first reading. I believe by the first reading, there were an exact number of units that were mentioned in terms of the various income criteria. Because the number of units in the building hasn't been finalized, staff has proposed that on second reading, a percentage be used instead of a specific number. Did I get that right, Sarah?
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Are there any other comments?
Do we need to move it as intended or...
Yes, that would be helpful.
I move it with amendment?
Second.
Okay. Acknowledging that changed version. Is there any public comment on this ordinance? Okay, second reading ordinance, we need a roll call. Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
And the ayes have that one as well. We will now move to item five on the agenda, which is first reading ordinance amending chapter sixteen oh-four of our code revising the stormwater permit fee for multifamily, commercial, industrial, and institutional. And this is the different piece, actually. Do we need the public works director for this one? Or are you going to do this one?
I think I can wing it.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Oh, boy, that was a tie. Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. So, do you want to run through this real quick?
Yes, I think the council discussed this in concept in work session probably about two weeks ago. And essentially, the wording is very much as you saw at that time. The only thing I did just want to call to the council's attention is on section E subsection three. We'd had some discussions between the council's work session and drafting the ordinance this evening in terms of how specific we should be in the ordinance itself, in terms of the parameters by which someone might qualify for fee reduction, and whether that should be in the actual code or it should be handled in some other manner. In talking amongst the staff as well as with the city attorney's office, what we concluded is that we didn't really want to get overly detailed in the code language itself. So, what you'll see in that section is reference made to regulations that will be developed and basically on file in the public works department for public inspection, that we thought that would be a better way of handling it. So, I think that's really the only change of any substance since the last time the council discussed this.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Snipper?
I like the idea of putting it in regulation rather than the ordinance.
Sorry, I didn't hear that. Could you say that again?
I like the idea of putting it in regulation rather than the ordinance, that level of detail.
Other comments? Any citizen comment? This is first reading, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Do we have who we need here for item six on the agenda?
Suzanne is actually here to present. We had invited representatives from iStudio, but obviously, we were expecting this item to come up later. But I think certainly Suzanne's ready, willing, and able to address it. If you did want to meet representatives from iStudio, they will probably be arriving somewhat later.
Why don't we... Yeah, we could move the consent agenda. We could take a five-minute break, and then we could go with it. Because this, we're assuming this item is going to take about a half an hour. Yeah, and if they're not here, then it might not take as long, but it might be good to ask them some questions. And I'd kind of like to, on the one hand, I'd like to run through this and get out of here, but I think it would be good to talk with them. So, let's hope they show up earlier than nine. So, why don't we move to the consent agenda? We have seven items on the consent agenda. Resolution requesting the...
We could break this down and just do them all individually.
Requesting the General Assembly and State Board of Elections to purchase voting equipment to accommodate instant runoff voting. Resolution of intention to purchase a recycling truck through Pennsylvania Capital City Automotive and Equipment Contract. A single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of a replacement recycling truck. Resolution authorizing execution of grant agreement with the community foundation for the indicators project. Resolution providing for our holiday recess starting after tonight and going until Monday, January fifth. A resolution providing for an appointment to the committee on the environment. And a single reading ordinance authorizing purchase of software modules and database. And since there are two single reading ordinances on here, we will need a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
Move the consent agenda?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Barry. Will a court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Barry?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Stevens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Councilmember Ray?
The consent agenda passes. We will now take a short break and hope that the consultants for the auditory project show up so they can ask them some questions.
Of course, it does show we purchased this other time.
Of course, it does show that we took this a few times.
We'll take some comments on the stormwater permit fee item that we blew by half an hour before it was scheduled, because we have a resident here who wanted to comment on that. So we've got a couple of minutes. So if you'd like to give us your comments on that.
Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you about the permit rate fee. My name is Robert Gu. I represent the Friends of Sligo Creek, and I was on the Committee on the Environment, and I work at EPA on stormwater issues. So this is sort of near and dear to my heart. Friends of Sligo Creek supports the proposed amendments to the stormwater fee structure. We do believe that the stormwater program should be self-supporting through both stormwater utility rates and permitting fees. And this effort moves the city closer to that goal, so that's to be applauded. We also strongly support the proposed idea of building incentives into the fee structure to reduce the overall stormwater impacts on the development process. So that's a good thing. We recognize that the proposed ordinance has such a provision. We, from my work at EPA, the incentives are a critical part of the best stormwater programs around the country. And I've been long chafing at the bit to try to help the city embed this kind of structure into the utility. Friends of Sligo Creek recommends that the city link incentives program to the use of specific green infrastructure or low-impact development practices, such as rain gardens, cisterns, rain barrels, green roofs, and permeable pavements. That is, provide incentives for residents and commercial businesses to put those practices in place, rather than use conventional stormwater practices that are underground vaults, and they're expensive, and we have no idea how they really work, and they tend to not function well over time. So we want to promote these green infrastructure practices that are using soils and plant-based processes that continue to work over time, just like our fields and woods. We'd also like to see the city, Friends of Sligo Creek, would also like to see the city develop a program similar to the Montgomery County Rainscape Program. And I provided some materials to the clerk, which provides financial incentives for residential, multifamily, commercial, and private institutional landowners, reduce their impervious surface areas through low-impact development techniques, such as tree planting, rain gardens, permeable pavements, conservation landscaping, and green roofs. From what we hear from the county, the public has responded well to this incentive program, and hopefully will reduce the county's stormwater burden over time, be more sustainable. Cities all over the country are moving to using green infrastructure approaches. New York City is one perfect example. They have this plan NYC, and they're investing millions and millions of dollars into this effort. And I encourage the city to do so, because as a resident of Tacoma Park, it's sort of weird for me not to have a similar incentive in Tacoma Park, which is very environmentally progressive. And so in consistency, I consult with a lot of Tacoma Park residents, and they're like, why can't I get this incentive? I want to do the right thing. And so I encourage the city, I'd be happy to work, and Friends of Sligo Creek would be happy to work with the city to help craft a program like this. And then I had some specific comments on the provisions in the ordinance. And I can even hold those comments or discuss them. But there was a waiver provision for, and I just wondered, when you look at the proposed amendments, do waivers incur additional costs to the city? And I think that's something we should consider. What is the sort of net positive balance of the program? And how, will there be costs incurred from not charging the permitees additional fees? Things like that. And then there were specific things. When the city looks at impervious surface areas, they look at the roofs and then the paid parking areas, but they didn't necessarily look at sidewalks and driveways. And so I was wondering whether there was a conscious decision to not include those areas, whether it was a sort of mapping issue, or was it a practical perspective that drove that path? And then I had some comments on clarity in terms of the language, in terms of the waivers. And then the last thing I wanted to ask the council and the mayor about was this requiring the permitee to pay 10% of the estimated construction cost of the required stormwater management controls as a fee for large developments, 21 units and above. And I was wondering whether that might be, might promote stormwater management practices or estimations, estimates of those kinds of practices that are contrary to what I think the city would want to promote. That is, underground vaults and more expensive practices in lieu of the green infrastructure practices. And so that may be somewhat problematic in trying to assess that fee and figure out what the real true cost of the best practices for the city might be. So those are some considerations I hope the council will entertain.
Thanks for the comments. And you said you gave a written copy to the clerk?
Yes, the clerk has...
And so maybe we can have some comments back on this from the Public Works Director when we get to second reading in January.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And now we'll move to item six, which is the single reading ordinance awarding the contract for architectural services for renovation of the auditorium. And Suzanne Ludlow is here, and somebody from iStudio.
We have Rich Snyder from iStudio, and Corbett from Cultural Design Corporation will probably be here shortly.
Okay, good. Welcome.
As you know, we've tried for some time to renovate this room and make it into more of a multi-use facility, but also one that's nicer, not as loud, smells better, all of those kinds of things. And the city, about a year and a half ago, retained the services of architectural firm MTFA to study the feasibility of adapting this room, working with a committee of stakeholders to evaluate the various competing uses and ways that those things can work together. And the outcome of that study was the adoption of Concept Plan D, which was approved and funded to continue to be implemented. And then in October of this year, we issued a request for proposals for the architectural services to actually implement that Concept Plan D. And we were very fortunate to receive seven good bids. The proposals are listed on the cover sheet. And we had a review panel of myself, Daryl Braithwaite, the director of Public Works, Lonnie Moffett, the communications manager, and Gerald DiPietro of Sharon Consulting, to interview four firms: ANCL, who you may remember did the gym feasibility study, iStudio, who's here, MTFA, and a firm, Schinberg Lavinas. And we were very impressed by all four firms, learned an awful lot through the interview process. The iStudio and MTFA were the top two firms coming out of that process. We did a lot of reference checks, and we thought a lot about it. And as the staff reviewed the information that was presented through the proposals and the interviews, there were a couple of things that made the iStudio proposal stand out that we really appreciated. One was, and Mr. Schneider can speak to, the real interest in green building and thinking, which is something that's important to all of us. But also another aspect that we really hadn't asked for that was a bonus from this, which was Cultural Development Corporation, a partner of theirs, expertise in working with multi-use spaces and the operations of those. So they have a real understanding, and one of the things that we were impressed with were discussions of how do you have a performer who's kind of more professional use the same space as a kindergarten class, and use the same space as you as the council, needing a certain amount of comfort and propriety as a council? And how to make all those things work, how to think about the storage needs for each, or the sound needs for each, the need not to hear what's going on in the lobby in here and vice versa for the various activities. And so we really felt that there was an understanding of those kinds of things. If Ms. Corbett arrives, she can tell you a little bit, but their firm not only helps give advice and consulting on this kind of thing, but they actually operate two multipurpose spaces of their own. So they have a lot of hands-on familiarity with that kind of activity. The calendar or the schedule for work on this was included in your package, and it's approved... a pretty fast schedule because so much work has been done into the concept plan, this is an implementation process. So while some of us are vacationing or taking a break, firms will work on the, preparing the real detail that goes into the proposal and come back to the Council Monday, January 12th, tentatively, for a presentation on what has been learned to date and if there's any recommendations or other items that you need to know about. And then go on to issuing bids and the whole process of actually doing the work. And happy to answer any questions, but I wanted to give an opportunity for Rick Schneider to say a few things about his firm and their approach to this proposal.
Yes, if you want to go ahead.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council, or City Council, for the opportunity to present our qualifications and to present this proposal to you. I think as we sat in the interview, the first thing that occurred to us and that we made apparent to the team was that this really kind of hits on all cylinders for the type of work we do. You're looking for an artful solution to something that has a civic purpose for building a community that's green and we've got the folks that can help us out there. The Cultural Development Corporation is a terrific group that's going to team up with us. We also have some great engineers on board that know this stuff inside and out. Milton Iriarte, who's with Flack &amp; Kurtz, WSP, has been practicing in the area for the last few decades. I've gotten to know him fairly well through the green design or sustainable design community. Maybe a brief overview of my firm would be in order here. I began iStudio with my partners in 1999 here in Washington DC, basically as a firm dedicated towards building sustainable communities. So in the last almost 10 years or so now, we've been doing just that, working with municipalities and local governments, also federal government, federal agencies in the area to help them realize their goals. We also do a lot of work with nonprofits on these community-based projects, whether it's community centers, childcare centers, arts and education spaces. And we also do a little bit of residential work as well, both multifamily and custom residential. So we've built a few homes in Tacoma Park as well. We've worked on some of the community-based projects in the area. I've had a wonderful opportunity to work with some very talented people along the way in the green community, had a chance to work with both the AIA Committee on the Environment as a chairman and with the Board over the last few years. And got on board early with the US Green Building Council here in Washington DC. I've been part of the Board until very recently. But also had the opportunity as a result of working with these two organizations dedicated to sustainability to go around the country and talk and lecture and work at conferences to promote green building, green design. And one of the things we've found along the way really is just that it doesn't necessarily take a whole lot of deep knowledge or know-how, but really the right attitude and the right mindset from the start helps out a lot with sustainability. So just kind of knowing your way around helps a lot, but also sort of having the right approach and knowing where to go to get the answers that we're looking for that can lead us towards sustainability. So as architects, we don't have all the answers in terms of engineering, that's why we have a nice full team to kind of flesh it out there. We've also got Hush Acoustics on board to help us out with acoustics, I think I mentioned, or I may not have mentioned them. I'm not quite sure what else to say. Maybe one of the first projects, as an example, that my partners and I undertook in 1999 was to do work with the DC Department of Parks and Recreation to work with the community there for two years on a playground and community center in Columbia Heights. For two years, we worked on design charrettes with the community, learning how to listen to them and their specific needs, and then being able to come up with artful solutions that were also green for their community and their neighborhood. I'm happy to say now that there is a new park and playground there where eight years ago, there were three youths shot on that playground there. But that was a very good example of a project that kind of hit us on all cylinders. It was green, it was community-based, and it was artful. And so that's something that we hope to also bring to this project as well. There's a collaborative part in this too, I should mention. It's really critical to getting a well-designed and green project and we've got a team here that we're used to working with. The most recent project that we performed with CU DC and Flack &amp; Kurtz was a similar type of study for the Duke Ellington School for Black Box Theater for them. And I think you may have given them a call too.
Yeah.
A pleasure to work with them. We're hoping to move forward with them as well sometime in the near future. I think it gives you a pretty good example of a sense of who we are and what we do, what we're about. And I'm happy to take any questions about us, our proposal, and I look forward to working with you should you decide to go with us.
Any copy? We're glad you're here and it was very interesting to read the proposal and see the possibilities for working with somebody who has a little bit more experience with some green building as we went through the process of what we did in this building over a number of years. We talked about green features, but we never, and we had some that we implemented, but there were some major ones that we didn't do and there was some talk about, oh yes, these things are coming along, but they had costs upfront and so we ended up not doing what we wish we had done. And so I'm hopeful that this time there will be some easier answers. And I'm assuming that you're getting to experience what we experience as we're talking with you, which is the sound of this HVAC, which is not easy to overcome. Many times we have to turn it off. And I'll just say, from my perspective, one of the things that I think was in the Concept D as an option was the kind of Swiss cheesing this wall in a couple of places. And I would say that from my perspective, I would hope that we at least get to do another door in the back that was part of that option, just because I think it's a whole lot better to have people coming into the back of the room rather than only through the front, because every time anybody walks in the door, everybody goes and looks like this, because it's too And I just look forward to actually getting this part of the project going and then finished. And reading the packet of information that we got on your partners and the types of projects that you've been involved in, it's very encouraging.
Thank you.
Questions? Councilor Robinson.
Tell us a little bit about what we'll see on January 12th.
Well, let's see. Prior to all, we're at, we'll be wrapping up the design development phase at that point. What you'll see are plans based on the scheme that's, the preferred plan at this point. We understand that that's gone through a community design process to get there. So that will be our departure point. What we're looking to do really is take that scheme and suss it out for you in more detail throughout the first phase, which is schematic design, during which we'll flesh out the plan, get into more detail, make sure it works, and see what kind of other options you have. As we go into design development, we'll have plans, elevations, sections, all the drawings that are necessary to kind of understand the scope and the character of the work. We should also at that point have some three-dimensional renderings that'll start to talk about the shape of the space as well as the finishes, probably not a specific finish palette, but we'll have a sense of what some of the finishes are, what your carpet, what your wall finishes will be, what your ceiling finishes will be, a general sense of maybe where lighting lays out. And then from there, with your approval, we'll, you know, work to sort of finalize all of that, make our decisions, then work on construction documents, which we can use for bidding as well. To give you a pretty good sense of your color renderings too are always a help. It's nice when you can see things not just in flat plan and black and white, but the type of, we saw that there were some early renderings by MTFA that gave you a sense three dimensionally of what the space would be like. And so those are the kind of things that we'll be presenting it to.
Okay, all right. Yeah, towards construction documents with estimates as well? I mean, is there a time for value engineering beyond the value engineering that we've already conducted in looking at...
Remembering that, that's a dirty word here.
Yes, that's, we've had A, B, C, and then D, which was kind of a consolidation of what we thought were the best ideas. And so how much work will you do in that realm, in the numbers realm?
Well, what happens on January 12th hopefully is not a first time or a first sort of check-in with folks that are helping to make the decisions. We'll be in constant contact with your contracting team here to sort of work through the Scheme D and make a presentation on our, you know, better decisions there to make sure that we're there. We can do value engineering. There's an opportunity for that, but it usually impacts the schedule. And if we do have to go back and go through redesign, that typically impacts the fee as well. What we want to do is kind of do our value engineering as we're going along, so that we're in constant contact with the contracting team and then also making sure that we've got your input as well.
Is it, that's six weeks from now?
Roughly.
Six weeks from now, roughly. And in the middle of that six weeks is the holiday season.
Right.
So are you confident and comfortable with working over the next six weeks on a pretty substantial effort? And is staff confident and comfortable with working hand-to-hand with them?
We're here.
And you too?
Yeah, I think it'll take a commitment from both sides. We can do, we can work as quickly as you like to a certain extent, but certainly a...
But you think that's an adequate period of time?
I think that's a fast, fast schedule. I think it's doable though. I think it's going to take good communication and decision-making.
Okay, thanks. Councilor Clay.
I'd like to move the ordinance if it hasn't been moved.
Second?
My experience in watching the architecture students in schools is that they live on caffeine and sugar. And at UC Berkeley, they slept under their desks. They had these big tall desks and they would just widen up and they'd drag in these...
I'm not sure that that's reassured.
Large, pretty...
I'm not interested in following along.
Well, the planners just sort of watched and enjoyed the parade. The two questions that I have is that in the selected projects that you have, I think this is your name, your name's Rick Carlin Schneider, right?
Yes, ma'am.
This is, was design principal at Inkscape Studio, and then two of them say that you're the project director in Envision Design, but it's on the iStudio Architects paper. What's...
That's correct. Those are examples of projects. I should maybe clarify the history a little bit. I began iStudio in 1999 and four years later teamed up with a partner. We combined our efforts. He had a firm named, called Inkscape Architects, and I had iStudio. We combined the names to make Inkscape Studio and I practiced for four years. During that time, worked on a number of projects like the ones that you saw there. After four years, we split. He kept Inkscape and I kept iStudio. In the last year, I spent some time as a consultant with Envision, working on projects with them. And so the project that you're seeing was Envision, is a project that I worked on as a project director for Envision. The Inkscape projects are projects where I was a principal or partner in that firm, but as we went different directions, the rights to that still remain with Inkscape Studio, so.
Okay. The second is more of a comment. I got elected to the City Council three years ago and this building was almost complete, but not quite. And there was a competition for the mayor's seat. I was relatively new to the city, so I don't know how there are actually really legitimate competitions for the mayor's seat. But I was fascinated that the building was sort of declared complete and an opening and celebration was held before things were really finished. And in fact, I've been on the council for three years and we're still finishing things with the building. I think part of that is because people don't like to go through an election with a half-finished project in the middle of a, in the middle of your center of your city essentially. And notice that the scheduled completion date is September 23rd of 2009, and we're all up for election again in November, so I just wanted to point that out.
The nominating caucus for that election will be probably one week later.
Right. So we want to be breaking that bottle of champagne.
Yeah. That's my message to you.
We're holding the nominating caucus down the hall.
The nominating caucus would generally happen in here.
Okay.
We have a five-week election.
Okay.
I wanted to note that Ann Corbett from Cultural Development Corporation has joined us.
And maybe, Councilor, we've seen his comments and then we can hear from you.
I thank you for coming here tonight. I just wanted to mention, you talked about the plan and a lot of the community vetting that's been done on the plan to date, but as a new organization coming in, be involved in the project with experience, I certainly would hope and encourage you to use your creativity to advise us and make recommendations where you see maybe we haven't made the best decision and you might have other ideas and other approaches that we should be considering that would make the facility better, but also at the same time maybe cost less.
Absolutely.
And then the other thing I'm sure has been, that you've noticed in the design, is one of the issues that we've had in here in the past has been acoustics, and that is an important part of what we envisioned for this new facility. So again, I want to emphasize that as you begin your work.
Yeah, we've got a really great acoustics engineer that's going to be working with us here, so that's a top priority we realize.
What did you say?
Too many comedians.
Suzanne, if you'd like to...
Ms. Corbett, would you like to say a few things about Cultural Development Corporation and put a drink to the table for this project?
Sure. My name's Ann Corbett. Pass the microphone down.
You're fine.
Okay. I'm executive director of a 10-year-old nonprofit based in the District of Columbia called Cultural Development Corporation. We specifically make space for art. We do that by brokering, consulting and advising developers, public agencies, other nonprofits. And in fact, we have developed several spaces and buildings on our own. We work in the whole range of arts-related projects, affordable housing for artists and their families, as well as commercial facilities where artists work, rehearse, exhibit, perform, you name it. Predominantly, our niche is smaller organizations. We've sort of built a reputation around collaborative space. The idea that every single artist or organization needs their very own venue to become the national center of fill-in-the-blank is exactly what we're not about. We're much more about how can we be economically efficient, environmentally efficient, and frankly, get artists working together in ways that they might not otherwise do if they were in independent facilities. Both because we feel that that builds stronger organizations from a management standpoint, there's peer learning there, as well as you get artistic products that you might not otherwise get because a filmmaker bumped into a dancer and something interesting came out of that. As I joked with the committee, we're sort of the masters of the dreaded multipurpose room. It's because that idea of shared space, we're constantly trying to create places where different kinds of artists and organizations can use them, which is typically, as I said, exactly what artists will tell you they can't do. You know, I'm a filmmaker, so a screening room has to look exactly like this and have, you know, these parameters. And I'm a dancer and that doesn't work in the same kind of space where you do film. And the reality is that they're right on some level, and yet because they're creative people, indicatively, they're going to make it work regardless. So we try to be, we try to balance that. We try to be sensitive to a variety of needs while also setting priorities, and I think that would be part of this process, probably trying to identify a couple of uses that are your priorities or the community's priority, because it can't be all things to all people. You probably can't have both, I don't know, chamber music and a rave club in here. I mean, it's just a...
And the city council.
And the city council. And a city council meeting. But, but I think there's a, there's a lot of creative ways to solve this puzzle, as I think it is. The other thing I'll say that we bring to the table is we, because we've become developers, we own and manage two collaborative facilities with each with dreaded multipurpose spaces in them. And our larger performance facility is probably a little bit bigger than this room, but not much. And we use it for music, dance, theater. We had educational workshops in it all day Sunday. So we operate that. And I think that one of the things that this process needs to really take into consideration is not just how are you going to design it so that it works for you and it works for members of the arts and the education community, but so that it can be run in a way that is manageable for the city staff, fair and equitable to any number of constituents who are going to want access to what will become a valued resource, and is economically efficient, financially sustainable for the city long-term. The last thing you'll want is a space that goes unused because the process isn't right or a space that is fought over and contentious because the process isn't right. Or a space that becomes financially, you know, untenable. And I think it's, those are wonky things that work out if you're not in the business of queuing up artists and renting out space. It's kind of a niche that only a fool would get into, but I think the hearts are in the right place and I applaud you for that.
Fools with a heart.
It's a new city slogan.
Nuclear-free fools with a heart. And just one quick comment that I thought of as you were talking. I don't want to expand the scope, but I would just point out that I think we have a lot of multipurpose spaces in here or things that we hope are multipurpose spaces. And if, in kind of vetting the combination that seems to work in here, there seems to be a need to take maybe what seemed to be one of our priorities and not accommodate it. And it works really well if you don't accommodate that one. And what do you do with that one? That maybe there's some other space in this building that can kind of adopt that. And the, the space that I'm thinking of, not knowing all of the difficulties of how to manage it now, is what's called the azalea room, the one over there?
Yep.
That was originally going to be kind of where we met more often than in here. If that was going to help us, you know, use this space well, we kind of turned away from that direction and we haven't, I don't think, actually met in there. But it was, it was wired for that.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not encouraging that we go back in there, but there may be opportunities in how we use that space, how that space gets used rather than how we use that space, that might be affected by what the thinking is in here.
Certainly, certainly as staff in hearing the information during the interviews, a number of us wanted to start picking people's brains for some of the ideas we're looking forward to today.
And I would carry the mayor's thought a little bit further, that if kicking us out of here would really be a big advantage, that if you could make suggestions on how us being over in the azalea room would work at a reasonable expense, that might be an option.
And, and I didn't go there.
At least for the, at least for the construction term, I think.
Oh, for the construction, yes.
Okay.
I would see a scope change if we started to go in that direction. I think we would change the schedule probably if we were to go away from Option D and start to open up to other possibilities, which I think is terrific option as well. But that would definitely have an impact on, on schedule.
On schedule and budget.
Schedule and budget, yes. We would be taking sort of a half step back to go back to the process you've just come through.
And, and one of the things that was the most frustrating about all that we did in previous phases was the, what, the, the pliability of the budget in an outward direction. And ending up spending more than double what we thought we were going to spend to start with. And so I'll speak for myself certainly and say that my hope on this one was that we would end up not getting to the end and saying, well, this is our budget. And somebody says, well, okay, you know, this fits in the budget, but oh, by the way, then there's the A, B, C, and D that aren't included in that figure and that you have to add on top. And it tended to be things like architects' fees. And so, you know, so we said in the beginning of this one, no, that's all got to be part of the number.
Right. So you're talking about a project budget versus a construction budget.
Right.
I understand what that is. Well, that's what we want to do is work to make sure that you have all the numbers upfront and maybe even provide sort of a long list or a menu of items that you may or may not want to add to it. Because every project, every project I've ever worked on always had a program that was up here and a budget that was down here. So what my job is, is to kind of find out where, help you find out where that sort of magic zone is and make sure that we're staying, that we've got a good budget and we're getting as much of the program in as we possibly can. So, because we always want more than, than we actually have in our pockets.
And I have a good understanding of that from the other side because I'm a general contractor.
So you know exactly how that works, yes.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Rice.
Thank you. Anne, do I have a rest? Nice comments and I really liked what you said. You looked at Option D, I take it. So you're familiar with what's here. And does it ring true to you what we ended up with as, given what you know about what we've got?
Sure. I mean, I, I think-
You didn't see anything glaring, like, oh my God, how could they have thought of that?
No, no.
Okay.
Not at all. I mean, um, what kind of thing?
In the plans, it seems as though mostly what you're doing is sort of re, in the options, it's mostly about reconfiguring what's back there.
That's true.
With subtle changes to the space here and the attendant space.
That's right. The wings change and the HVAC changes.
Mostly what's back there.
Seating changes. Seating changes. We're thinking a door in the back.
Right.
Stuff like that.
But the stuff you're stuck with is the stuff you're stuck with.
Yeah, like the shape.
The roof is right above that thing and there's structure in there and it comes down so far and we've got some load bearing wall.
I mean, I think there's, in order to make this space theatrical on any level, there's other infrastructure that you're going to have to add that's not going to be cheap. You know, I mean, simply to have theatrical lighting, you're going to need a-
Structural grid.
-grid in the ceiling or some other structurally sound, basically set of pipes-
Mm-hmm.
-that can hold really heavy lighting instruments.
With light-
Right now, you've got what's sort of similar to that, but on the spectrum, this end of the spectrum in a, in a track lighting with really light canisters and you need the opposite end of the spectrum to even hang one par 50 and turn it on, you know. And so-
Was that, is that in Option D anywhere? Probably not, right?
I mean, that, that kind of infrastructure isn't in your option now.
I see.
I mean, I think that's, that's the value that this team brings to the table versus, dare I say, the, the architecture team that was doing the general renovation. That's our specialty.
Okay.
One of the things I think that will be helpful is, yeah, and when they come back on January 12th, the various items can be fleshed out for you to see what, what's incorporated in the, in the proposal and the estimates that came from the first segment. Also, one of the things that I found interesting about the presentation was just kind of discussions about what storage needs there are and those kinds of things. That, you know, we have space to deal with it to a certain extent, but to think it through and see how that works. And, and so that's the fleshing out that happens over the next, the next few weeks.
Okay. And, and to follow up on Terry's comment and, and Bruce's, there's a, a large multipurpose room about 50 feet, 50 yards from here, right across the alley in the Piney Branch Elementary School.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big room. It doesn't have fixed seating. Has a full stage. I don't think there's a fly loft. I don't think there's any lighting bars or anything like that. But you might wander across there and just take a look too if you're, to follow up your comment on some things are appropriate, some things aren't, and some things we can use. So in this building, the, the spaces that are available aren't only in this building.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks.
And two quick comments that I can add from that discussion. One is that in my mind, I always kind of thought that the space outside these doors where the soda machines are kind of could be storage. And the other one was, as you were talking about the, the structure that might be needed for the lighting and if you were getting theatrical, it called to mind the discussion that I think I recall correctly, that we were told that if we kind of went beyond a certain point in terms of what this might be as a stage, that there was a threshold that we passed that kicked in more requirements and that we were trying to stay under that threshold. And I didn't know if that affected things like you were talking about with the lighting or not.
The lighting will affect, I think what you're referring to there is building code issues.
Right.
At a certain point, you go from a raised platform to a stage. And really the key there, the kicker is, is curtains. You know, if we actually have something to enclose, then we start to get into fire code, issues of fire code. We have to change our designation of the space and it becomes, you know, more onerous, which-
And I don't think that's where we're-
Okay, yeah.
We understood that you're not even really going close to that.
Right, okay.
So.
Right.
But to have, but to have some stage lighting, some theater lighting, that's not going to-
Okay.
-put you into that realm of fire code issues.
Other questions, comments?
I have just one other quick comment about the timing thing, which just is to say that if the process thus far is any indication of how the rest of the schedule will go, we should be fine. I have to admit, this has been the most expeditious, efficient process I have ever been involved in in like 20 years of putting out bids and trying to get somebody to call you back and talk to you. I mean, the staff-
On the money.
We were trying to have you here last week.
We were getting that, yeah.
So I think you guys fit right in by moving along tonight.
Right, and I should have, right, I should have known that when he said 9:20, it really meant 8:45. Because-
We're always seeing good signs of-
Yeah.
-good decision-making process moving along.
Okay.
No comment?
And one other, yeah, one other comment that I-
We're just smart.
That's a risk of, we had discussed the idea, I think this speaks to the schedule and it speaks to the budget management, of creating a short list of contractors and going ahead and requesting qualifications and selecting a contractor based on qualif, having an open competition-
Right.
-but then selecting a contractor now to get into the process in advance so that we had somebody more onerous in terms of the budget than our experience with creating a design, bidding it out and getting somebody to give you the sweetheart number so that you'll choose them. And then, oh, by the way, we looked at the CDs and now it's 150% of what you thought. Never mind the change orders that come later. All due respect to you as a contractor, you know, we've got to hold them tight.
We're going to be looking, making sure that everything, we can do all this with our procurement regulations and what all that requires, but we do want to try to take the best options that we can to, to have responsive bids and at that point.
And I, I would vote that a contractor doing a theatrical facility is a real specialty. There's just like not so many of them built, that there's a whole lot of folks out there with lots of experience doing that. So I think you really want to get somebody who's got experience and not experienced building, you know, the Kennedy Center because that's not what we want.
A very different kind of success.
Right. And hopefully at this point in time in this economy, that a limited number of people will be available.
A little bit more.
Happy to be on the job and bring it in at a good price.
With no change orders.
I can only emphasize that too, to, to stay with a, with an aggressive schedule. But also, it helps to build the team early on if we're working together during design to, to check with the contractor on the true cost of things and they're not just seeing it at the end of the process for a week and throwing some numbers at it to try and get, to try and get the job. So there's that. It's, it really helps with staying on budget and staying on schedule. It really helps with communication. And I guess in summary too, the two main things that are going to help you hit your budget and hit your target, aside from choosing a team that, you know, that can do the work and knows what they're doing. The decision-making process we talked about, keeping the scope in line. And so as we talk about widening the scope to look at different things, the way to stay on schedule is going to be to continue to stay within that scope and to keep the scope on track. And part of our job sometimes is to be the, a little bit of a taskmaster if we have to-
Tough love.
Tough love.
In the, in the city where-
That's exactly what it's like. I know you want that. You want to stay on budget, on track, you can't have that. If you want to do that, if you want to put more money and a little more time, then yes, we can do that as well, because we're always happy to do that. But we're here to be the voice.
I withdraw my request that you look at the other room.
And then the second thing, the, the second thing that's going to help you stay on budget and on time is again, a contractor and working with the contractor, getting him on the team as soon as possible, so.
I agree. I understand that from wearing my other hat. And I would say that I would anticipate that if we look at any possible widening of scope, my sense is that we look at it for a very brief period of time when we say, if you want to go there, and then you get a nice quick decision to say, yes or no, and close it right back down to it again.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or comments before we take public comment, before we vote? If anybody public would like to comment, if you want to come up to the podium? Since we don't have omnidirectional microphones every five feet in the room yet.
I was very pleased to see Rick Schneider here. I didn't know he was going to be here. I worked with him at, when he was with Inkscape Studios to do a low-impact development demonstration project at EPA Headquarters Building. He was very creative, responsive, worked with us well. I was so pleased with the design, so I'm elated that you selected this firm and this team. And, and I hope, you know, that we get something greener than we had under the last administration. And I'm looking forward to seeing the article in, in The Voice about why we are doing it and hopefully we can do it through this effort.
Thanks.
Mayor Williams, councilmembers, Suzanne, staff, city manager, clerk. As you know, and our guests, as you know, I've been very interested in following and participating in working on the renovation of the space into a performance space. And I want to say how pleased I am to see that we are going forward with this, that we're getting to the point where we're going to place a contract to do the construction drawings, to bid it out. I am a little surprised that there was no citizen participation in this particular phase, and I hope that as they develop the drawings, that the expertise and the considerations of the ad hoc auditorium committee that was put together at the direction of the council is considered and is, continues to participate as part of the effort. As you know, we went through a lot of effort with MTFA, the previous architectural firm working on conceptual plans, developing the programmatic aspects that, that finally resulted in Concept D for the space. But one of the things is, we never really thought of the space as a theatrical space. It was a room that you could use as a performance space for many different kinds of performance, but it also had to fulfill all the governmental needs of the city of Tacoma Park. And I still feel, I mean, it was an education process for those of us who were on the committee. And I would like- and I would like to, to hope that it continues that way as we develop the first things. But I do like the effort that we're going forward. I like everything I've seen. And I just feel, you know, that we should continue moving ahead to see, um, a positive transformation in this space that can be used for many different purposes. And I was taken back with this, you've always prefaced the purpose, multipurpose room with the word dreaded. That doesn't have to be true. With creative solutions, a room can fulfill many needs, um, both the performance aspects that this community needs for a good two-hundred-seat hall and for our weekly and monthly needs as a governmental organization. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. And for the court, that was Charlie Pilsner. You have sixty seconds for rebuttal.
I'm in complete agreement.
Yeah, those are, those are good points. Um, and I don't think it's ever been the, uh, the plan, at least on the part of the council, to present AIDA here with, you know, elephants and, uh, and trumpeters from the lofts. Um, but I think it's true to say that Tacoma Park is justly famous for its music, in particular the Jazz Festival and the Folk Festival. And, you know, some of us have thought that this would be a sort of off-season venue for some of the performances that the place is justly famous for. And, uh, and therefore, you know, the, I don't think we're talking about curtains and, you know, major flyways and productions and so forth, but more of an intimate place where in particular music, uh, can be featured, which is why it's important to get the acoustics right. And, uh, you know, your comments made me think that at some point, it would be useful to bring some musicians in to the process as we go a little further and, you know, find out what kind of music is likely to be performed here and then, you know, try to, try to accommodate that to the extent possible. Maybe you do this as a general rule anyway, but I know that there are plenty of folks here who will probably be performing here in the future, who would love to come in and chat with you about, you know, what they would like to hear and see in a, in a hall of that type.
I meant theatrical with a small t.
And, council, we, we, we had an expert here only a couple of weeks ago on Arts and Humanities Day when Washington Opera was here and, uh, Councilmember Siemens performed with the. Performed with the Washington Opera.
Carmen, I think.
Yes.
I shall never live it down. I, I would like to.
Alan Becker.
I would like to turn, uh, uh, Councilmember Barry's comments into a question, that is, how do you envision, uh, getting input from the community, or do you envision getting more input from the community between now and when you come back to us on January?
I guess if I might answer that first. Um, does the, uh, input from, from the community really help format the Concept Plan D? Um, and I think that as, um, they start looking at things, there may be questions or ideas or things that we wanna bounce off the community as they come up. And I think that it's gonna be kind of a, you know, a, a little bit of back and forth and informal process. I'm really looking forward to, to talking with Charlie on some of the ideas or whatever to go through and make sure that, um, the team stays on track, or if there's other ideas, that, that they're bounced off and we hear what those are about. On the other hand, we are keeping to a, a pretty tight schedule.
Right, and I appreciate that, but I think there really is a, uh, value, and not just meeting with Charlie, but also the entire committee at least wants to, uh, to get a better sense of appreciation of, of what the community is talking about using this space for. Uh, just as a little bit of background, and so we're only talking about an hour, hour and a half to, uh, to go through and, and really let the community talk to you and make sure that they feel comfortable, that you understand, uh, how the space is gonna be used. And then, and I think that's, uh, uh, something that the, uh, community members would really appreciate.
Absolutely. I think it would be good at a, at a, maybe kickoff meeting to start to meet some of the, some of the other stakeholders or, or contracting, mainly folks from the community who are actually going to be using, using the space and give their input prior.
I would just note that, uh, those sessions are also available on streaming video. If you don't know, the, on the council's, uh, on the city's website, uh, all the council meetings are recorded, uh, on video and you can watch them. And, uh, and this session where we talked about the design and select, went through the process of selecting Design D and heard from people about the things is, and all the commentary is, is also available in that commentary. And, um, the final comment is that Tacoma Park, if you don't already know, is well-known for, uh, citizen participation in all aspects of the planning process, so you should build that into your schedule.
And streaming video will take you more than your hour or hours.
But it is searchable.
It's searchable and you can fast-forward.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, this is, let me find the item here. It's a single reading, so we need to do a roll call vote. Will Clark please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Simmons.
Aye.
Councilmember Stewart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Okay, approved unanimously. Thank you all. And we are now adjourned until January fifth.
See you next year.
Great.
Speak. Come here. Speak. Yeah, tell me about it. Speak. Speak. Oh, that's. Get it all out of your system now.